I'll just take a moment to silence your devices. We would appreciate that. Double check.
You OK with this?
Yeah. Till I trip and break a leg.
Yeah, just be careful.
I will be careful.
If you miss, if something happens, can I turn off the power? Let me know.
It was fully charged. It's zero and zero.
Really?
See, Taylor Roadside is all part of a package.
I should unplug this from that.
Separate items.
So it can't suck this battery too.
It's all part of a package.
I'm just asking the question I got asked.
Yeah, so it's a part of a package.
Good morning. It is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the August 22nd, 2018 council meeting. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. I do have a notice about the agenda that one item, 8A, new business, proposed developer's agreement for Riverside Drive wastewater force main project has been, the applicant has asked for a continuance. So that will be heard sometime in September that we know of at this point.
September 17th.
September 17th is the plan for that item. Still going to be a long meeting, so hang in there with us. So please stand firstly for an invocation, then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father above, Creator of the universe, we ask that you bless this assembly and its work, and those who appear before us to provide information vital to all our citizens. We also ask our blessings on those honored today with proclamations and presentations. Help us to be, to think, to act on what is right because it is right. Make us truthful, honest, and honorable in all things. Make us intellectually honest for the sake of right and honor without thought of reward to ourselves. Give us the ability to be charitable, forgiving, and patient with all our fellow citizens. Help us to understand their motives and their shortcomings even as you understand ours. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. OK, we do not have any proclamations or presentations, but if your name is in the running for a committee position, a committee member position, if you are a nominee for a committee and you would like to take a few minutes to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Is anybody here, raise your hand if you're here to introduce yourself for a committee? Anybody? OK, seeing none, we will recess as the city council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Thank you. Same to all.
Good to see you, Charlie.
OK, I will call the CRA meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. We do have 1, 2, 3 items of business, approval of the minutes, the project status report, and the budget status update for CRA and Lashley Marina Funds. If anybody would like to speak on one of those 3 items, now would be the time. If anybody would like to speak on CRA agenda items, please make your way to the podium, state your name, you have 3 minutes. Would anybody like to speak on the CRA? OK, seeing nobody rising, we'll move into the first item, which is approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 3rd, 2018.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 3rd, 2018.
Second. We have a motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have the project status report, CRA Director.
Howard Cunick, CRA Director. This is the activity for the Marina for the, so far, for the month of August, July, excuse me. And you see the comparisons, pretty standard comparisons from the previous months. The pump-out vessel in July compared to June and July of last year. I guess the weather was conducive, so they traveled a lot more miles and they pumped out a lot more gallons. The parking is moving along very quickly. This picture is recent, but that's still outdated. So they're doing quite well. The contractor has visions of trying to finish by the end of the month, but weather permitting, it'd probably go into September. Where's? I don't see Rick, but I think it probably will go into September. But they're doing quite well.
That's very fast.
There's Mark. Still looking at August?
Good morning, Mark Garing, Public Works. They're hoping to pave it 1st of next week.
Oh.
And that would basically finish the project off.
Wow.
That's fast.
Very good.
Excellent. Excellent.
Every now and then, we get a contractor that's...
Wish the pump could be that way.
Savor it, it doesn't always work that way.
No, it doesn't.
Lay-o-lay-o-lay.
Anyway, that's doing quite well. OK, now this is different than what you had in your packet, so I'll let Mikhail take over.
Good morning, Mikhail Finkel, Paralegal and Assistant to the City Manager. We got word last night from our attorneys that we're going to resolve on the Dream Salon and Spa, the lease that we thought we were going to have to go through eviction. We've worked it out where we can just have one of the principals sign and hopefully be done with that. So there is some interest in the unit, so hopefully we will have some good news in 2 weeks at your next CRA meeting about that unit.
Excellent. Thank you.
And as you can see, the coffee and tea shop is still on schedule for September.
That's moving along. The concrete pad was poured and done, and some of the dirt's been now raked out, so that's moving along. I guess we got some fresh dirt going to be pulled in soon?
We will be. Fresh dirt at the fresh market? I like it.
Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager. Yes, the group is starting to work on the project. Equipment has been purchased, they're in, they've placed it in the shed, they've started weeding, they've started to clean up the area and now lay the mulch around the beds. So once that is completed, the fresh soil will be placed, will be delivered, and they can hopefully get close to be, start gardening.
Is that all being done with volunteers, or is there any city employees involved?
The city employees are assisting. It's a joint partnership.
Thank you.
We're moving along on schedule for the design of areas, Area 2. So we anticipate final construction documents sometime this fall. That's moving along. And the restrooms, we're going to bid those documents out September, October. And so that, that's the restrooms by the pavilion. So that work should be starting, if the bids come back favorable. Now, the playground's another story. Who wants to give the update on the playground?
Mikhail Finkel, Paralegal again. The restrooms are going fine. The construction's going fine. What I think what he's referring to is the pour and play. We're still having issues. We are going back and forth with the vendor on whose responsibility is to fix it, and we're still in that process.
Do we still have it closed off? Where the dips are?
Where the depressions were.
They patched it.
They patched those, but we weren't happy with the patches. So yeah, you can still use the playground, but we're seeing some other types of depressions around the area, so we're trying to find a fix that will best benefit every, everything.
The depressions that were corrected, they're not depressing anymore. We just don't like the patch, and there are some other areas that we're nervous about, so hopefully that won't be another Dream Salon one which takes forever to fix that, but you never know. The playground is, is open.
And the restrooms?
Yeah, that, the construction of the restroom is going fine. That's going fine. Oh, more?
Just because it's my job, for the record, we don't consider the repair work as it exists now to be a safety hazard. It's more aesthetic at the moment.
Good. Thank you.
David Levin, the attorney.
I was gonna say, weren't you supposed to state your name?
The playground sign, actually, the, that's the new design with our brand.
Looks great.
And 3 of them have gone up in various places. And actually, you'll be able to see the new building signs soon. Gateway signs, that's under manufacturing or whatever you want to call it, under construction. So those new signs are on its way. What happened to the library? Did we lose the library? The library's going fine. We lost the library slide. It's doing fine. If you go by the site, they're, they're on schedule. Somehow, we lost the library slide. Oh, well. That's the monthly report.
Howard, are we back up in full service at the Marina, or are we still down a few slips?
I think they were, I think they were fixed.
OK. So it's all able to be?
I think they were fixed.
OK.
So... I don't see anybody correcting me, so I'll, I'll go by there again. But I think, I think they're, they should be back up and running.
Just one clarification on the playground. The playground was closed this week through Saturday for the restroom construction, but for that purpose.
And we put out, we put out notices to the public for that too as well. We tried to publicize that as much as possible. Questions for Howard?
None.
Nope? OK, the next item is the fiscal year 2019 budget status update for the CRA and the Lashley Marina Funds.
Good morning, Kristen Simeon, Interim Finance Director. We're going to start with the CRA fund, and just as a reminder, the CRA fund has 3 divisions within it, and we'll go right into that. So the first division is considered our debt service division. It is the division that is funded by the Tax Incremental Financing, also known as the TIF. And we can only use the value over the 80.6 million that was the taxable base. And as you know, the district was extended until December 2030 on the debt was restructured to match those revenues. And again, any excess funds from the TIF revenue over our debt service remains in a reserve to pay off the debt, so the debt could either be paid off early, and that's when the CRA would sunset. In the current year, we have an estimate of 7.4% increase in the TIF revenue. That's between the county and the city. The millage rate for the city and the county were estimated to remain the same. The debt service is per our current debt schedule, and that had a change this year in January due to the Tax Cut and Jobs Acts, which reduced the corporate tax rate to 21% from 35%. So the interest increased over the remaining life of the loan $454,000.
Kristen, does that prompt any reconsideration of the, of the end date for the CRA?
No, it does not. Currently, with our current projections, we are accumulating a reserve that would still allow us to actually even pay off the loan maybe a year early.
Good. Thank you.
Yes. This graph just shows you a history of our tax value increment over the years. We show 2007 at the height of construction and where we're at now. So we still haven't even reached back to where we were back in fiscal year 2007. And again, this is the revenues associated with that base. So looking at the proposed fiscal year 2019, you see our revenues would be approximately 1.8 million. Our debt service payments are about 1.5. And again, that increases the reserve specifically for debt service. Our next division is our Harold Court Operations Division. This is specifically from our lease payments for the tenants and for the parking garage, the tenant common areas. And we only expend for the operations and maintenance of the parking structure. We assumed at the time, the information we had was 14,120 square feet would be leased the full year, so that was everything, including the Punta Gorda Tea, Coffee and Tea. And then the, the area where the spa was going in, the 2,849, we just estimated a partial year vacancy. We did about 3/4 of a year on that. We have a 5% estimated increase in insurance. Other expenditures are estimated to increase 3%. And we currently fund $45,000 annually from CRA, from CRA reserves, and $50,000 comes from the other, the third division, the Harold Court Operations, to continue maintaining the parking structure. So part of it comes from these leases, and part of it comes from our other operations. So for fiscal year 19, our total revenues are estimated about $260,000, and our total expenditures about $186,000. We are still increasing reserves, and we have 3 reserves in this fund. Part of it is for the property taxes. We collect them in advance for the taxes. Then we have the R and R, which comes from the common area maintenance, and then the regular operations. Our third division is just our regular operations and maintenance. We have some capital projects. It's usually more replacement items. It's not really new projects. Maintenance of CRA improvements, and the revenues come from the Tribu Woods loan repayment. We have some CRA land leases and interest income. The expenditures in this division are $60,000 annually for the fountain maintenance, and then we have $40,000 annually for Lashley Park and Marina facilities. In fiscal year 19, there was additional need of $50,000 for repairs to seawall caps and slabs approaching the pier. We have $45,000 annually for the Harold Court Center facilities, and we can sustain these operations through 2024 at these current levels. Any questions?
Again, Christine, the significance of the fiscal year 2024 that you use in here?
It's just saying that if we continue to have the same type of operation expenditures, we would, we would no longer have, we would have to move these to like parks and grounds versus being able to support it out of CRA.
Good.
Again, the proposed 19 revenues are approximately $128,000 and $204,000 in maintenance. And you'll see the ending reserves. Any questions on the CRA?
I have one. As far as the TIF goes, what are your assumptions for the millage rate for 19? The same, or did you?
So for 19, we kept the millage rates the same for both the, the county indicated they were trying to keep theirs the same as well, and the city's was the same.
OK.
Mine is not so much a question as it is a comment. I've had residents ask me for more financial detail behind these kinds of presentations, and whether it's the CRA or any budget update that we do.
OK.
And if we go online to the finance website page, and you break down, you look at the 2018 budget or the proposed budget for 2019, there's significant detail, and it's exceptionally well-indexed, so it's easy to find all the data behind it. So the data is there, and suggestion is either somehow provide in our, in our agenda as one of the items is either to provide a link to that, or, or actually take those pages and actually make that an attachment that people can see. Because there's significant detail behind it, and I think people are looking for transparency. And it's not that we're not being transparent, they just don't know where to find it.
OK.
And I think it would help explain all these, these numbers, and how do we get to these numbers?
Sure, we can do that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristen? So you didn't need any motions or items on this? There's just a?
No, it's just an update.
Yeah.
For the Marina Fund pro forma, we showed proposed fiscal year 19 through fiscal year 2023, and as you can see, it is a balanced fund with use of reserves, and operations are OK through, through the whole 5-year pro forma. There's no change in fees suggested at this time. It includes estimated grant for operations of the pump-out boat in all fiscal years at this point. And again, the fiscal year 19 was balanced with use of reserves.
Kristen, just a comment.
Yes.
I know coming from the last couple of years, as it continues through here, we continue to operate in a deficit mode. And we draw down reserves $44,000. Next year, drops down to a little under $9,000, then progresses back up to $32,000 for the pro forma 23.
Yes.
I know we're predicting no increase in fees, but it is a little troublesome that this is a commercial and enterprise activity, and that we're operating that in a deficit mode looking even ahead.
Yes, so in fiscal year 19, the deficit was mainly related to, when we get to the next page, some Marina projects that are currently needed over there. However, in the future years, again, they are estimates. We hope that slip rental will increase again. We had a little decrease this year due to the Hurricane Irma and some slips being damaged. So those are things that we will hope to improve on. Another area is that we do, do our best to reduce expenditures throughout the year, and so sometimes we do come up with a little extra funds by the end of the year. But we do continually look at that, and that's why we do project it out 5 years.
Thank you.
OK, so going on to the Marina projects that are currently scheduled for fiscal year 19. Again, the pro forma does include $25,000 in all fiscal years for repair and maintenance of the mooring fields and docks. Dredging needs are estimated at $25,000 each year. And again, sometimes it might not be needed in one specific year, but then in the next year, it's needed, and it might be more than 25, so those funds are going to be carried over each year if they're not spent. The pump-out boat or motor replacement, the city will pursue a grant, but currently is in the pro forma with use of reserves. And then there's a workboat replacement that's needed, and again, they will look for a used boat for that. They estimate about $20,000. And again, we will do everything to try and find a grant opportunity, but at this time, it is funded by reserves as it is a necessary need. The replacement of washers and dryers in the boater's facility laundry facilities is estimated at $6,000. And that's all we have on the Marina Fund. Any questions?
Questions for the Marina Fund?
None. Very good.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, I was, there was a fly that was in my... Woke everybody up, though, right?
So you don't need any action on this one as well?
No. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
OK, citizens' comments on Community Redevelopment Agency. If anybody would like to speak on the Community Redevelopment Agency, any topic within that area, take this podium to my right. You have 3 minutes. Citizens' comments open on Community Redevelopment Agency. OK, Commissioner comments. We'll start with Gary.
No comments, just glad to be back in the saddle.
None. None at all?
No. Nothing.
OK, with that, we are adjourned. We will reconvene shortly as the city council.
Don't you get some balls?
I know.
I'm sorry. It's been a few years since I had one, but...
It's my souvenir from the four deluged cities.
I'm hopeful because my wife is, they take care of my work.
Oh, yes, yeah. That day of the week.
OK. Public hearing, the first one is skimmers. Retail gas pumps. OK, we will call the Punta Gorda City Council meeting back to order. We have 2 public hearings, first of which is GA 04-18.
For the record, David Levin, city attorney. This is, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which are read by title only. An ordinance of city of Punta Gorda, Florida, mending Chapter 15 offenses and miscellaneous of the Punta Gorda Code, mending reserved section 15-8, establishing security measure requirements for owners and operators of retail gas pumps, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Mikhail Finkel, Paralegal. This ordinance is a result of council's discussion in July in review of the Cape Coral ordinance to, to help provide some, or to preempt, the skimmers, which have, the police have advised that with the ordinances and actions taken south, they're starting to move up into our area. So this ordinance will require gas pump owners to place a locking mechanism. The statute only requires the security tape, so this ordinance takes it a step further and requires an actual locking mechanism. Or in the alternative, there are some provisions where they can install a device that would render the pump inoperable if it was to be breached if their encryption is within the skimmer itself. We have this picture here, one that was in the city. In this instance, there's a scanning device in the front, and then a separate encryption device behind it, and the skimmer was placed in between it. And you can see by that picture, I don't, they've circled where the skimmer is, but you can see they're very hard, hard to find. So this is just the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the security measures.
Yes?
Just one quick question, please. What is our timeline for implementing this and making sure that the enforcement is there?
I don't, we haven't discussed that. The, the ordinance would be adopted at second reading, and then we would, you know, luckily we only have a few retailers in the city, so our education process, you know, shouldn't take that long.
Good morning, Pam Davis, Chief of Punta Gorda Police Department. I, I would suggest probably a 30-day period for them to come into compliance. We'll, we should deliver letters. My thought was to hand-deliver letters to the stations, give them 30 days to come into compliance, and then go back out and, and then work with them. I mean, we need to educate them, make sure that they, they have an idea of what they should be doing.
Great. Thank you.
The, the ordinance is effective upon its adoption. But of course, and since we don't have that many to concern ourselves with, we can kind of do it on an individual basis, and with your permission, as the chief has just indicated, the first part will be educational.
Gary?
I've just noticed in purchasing gas recently, that a number of the stations already, they have signs on the pumps saying that they've already installed anti-skimming devices. Are these devices that we know of in compliance to what we're proposing?
I'm not sure. I haven't actually seen any. I've, I've been looking, I see the security tape, and I don't know if they're referring to that, because there are signs that talk about that they have security measures, and I actually have a copy, a picture of what that security tape looks like. I installed it, so I don't know. So, Terry, are you aware of anything? Yeah, so I'm not aware of any. But we put this picture up. That's the security tape that the Department of Agriculture requires them to have. As you can see, it'd be very easy to just cut that tape and get in there, and then, like I told, I said last time, I was able to go online, and it looked like I could purchase that tape, so it'd be very easy to do that, get in there, and... that tape, so it'd be very easy to do that, get in there, and then put another piece of tape over top of it.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's it's another consideration for annexation for potential properties like Pilot, another, the proposed Wawa, I think the Wawa up on Port Charlotte already has locks on the the pumps, so, you know, those are just, it's just a consideration for discussion.
So my question for the, they have to choose one of these, but the second one, the a device or system that encrypts the customer payment card information, they, the picture that you showed, they have that?
Well, I'm gonna show you something, so, if you can look down at the bottom, you see this black wire here, that black wire? That black wire is actually supposed to be plugged into, up there, right up into that green circuit board. So, what we're suggesting is the encryption device would be in that circuit board, you you wouldn't be able to pull those wires off and connect it to a skimmer device, so that's the type of encryption. And I have Lieutenant Cochran here with me from the Criminal Investigation Section, and one of the things that we've kind of noticed is, we're not techs that can figure that out either, so we'd probably have to consult with the Department of Agriculture and have a tech come out and actually look, if they tell us that they have an actual encryption device on there, we would want to get somebody that's an expert to say, yes, they're good to go.
And don't, I mean, don't most gas stations have video cameras, or you can't?
Most do, but one that was hit twice does not have working cameras.
Okay, so if they choose the number two item, that's gonna be a little bit harder to inspect than just the lock on the outside, obviously.
Well, we would have to literally have somebody come up and help us, and then open up the pumps and have them show us what it looks like. It's it's expensive, too, so, yeah, if the lock's gonna be a little cheaper for for these gas stations.
It it's important to note that ultimately, it's the gas station that is responsible for protecting its customers. And so, we've provided methodology here that kind of requires them to do something to protect their customers, but we, as the chief just mentioned, we don't have the technical expertise to be able to take a look at whatever it is that the gas station has decided to use for the protection. We can only verify that they've made the effort, and if no effort is made through the different methods here, that's a violation of the ordinance. So I want to make it clear that the city is not trying to assume any liability to prevent consumer fraud, we're just trying to assist in that process.
Nancy?
Well, and we're trying to protect our consumer.
Right.
We cannot do anything to change the state statute, so the encryption device is in the state statute. All we can do is add to.
Correct.
Correct. So what we are doing is adding to, and I I appreciate the the issue that the chief has described with the encryption devices, because that is a technical issue, and I agree that the lock would be a much simpler thing to to do and less expensive.
The point I'm trying to make, and it probably has no application whatsoever in Pontegora, where we only have a limited number of stations, but let's just say there was an operator with a lot of expense, a lot of stations, and didn't want to go through the expense of buying the encryption device that actually worked, they could put a dummy, and we wouldn't know the difference, but they would, we would find them to be in compliance simply because it looked like there was an encryption device, and I'm just trying to make it very clear that we aren't gonna actually test it to make sure that it works properly, because we don't have the expertise. And we don't want anybody to assume that we are testing, we just are making sure that they are doing something, presumably doing something correctly.
And any, and anytime we do something above and beyond what's the state, we need to have an enforcement plan, or we shouldn't be doing it.
Correct.
So that's where the, my questioning was going. Gary?
I was just gonna say that if somebody puts in a dummy encryption device, and then that particular pump is compromised, I would assume that's a greater legal liability for that individual operator, it's not on us, they were the ones that broke the law.
Correct.
We did the best we could to.
And we could refer them to Department of Agriculture for sanctions, you know, for the state statutes.
Correct, I just wanted it out there that we are not assuming responsibility for inspecting the device itself and verifying that the device itself, I mean, it could be a legitimate device, but with bugs in it, that may not work, so, you know, just trying to make sure that we understand the limits of our actions.
Any more questions? This is a public hearing, if you would like to speak on GA zero four dash one eight, now would be the time. Please come to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes to speak on GA zero four dash one eight. Is anybody here to speak on GA zero four dash one eight? Now would be the time during this public hearing. Last call for anybody on GA zero four dash one eight.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve GA zero four dash one eight. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have GA zero five dash one eight.
Yes, and this is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. The City of Pontegora, Florida, amending Pontegora Code, Chapter ten, Yard Waste, Solid Waste and Recycling. Article Roman numeral two, Solid Waste, amending section ten dash eleven, increasing the monthly fee for removal and disposal of curbside recycling services, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Mikel Finkel, Paralegal. This is the, our our recycling contract is with Waste Management. This increase is the annual increase that you saw in in the budget discussions, it's just sixty cent per the contract going up. And then, once we do the ordinance part, we do have representatives here from Waste Management and Jenna Blackwell Supervisor from Sanitation, they would like to give you a little presentation on on recycling.
Questions before we start?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if anybody would like to speak on GA zero five dash one eight, now would be the time. Does anybody here want to speak on GA zero five dash one eight? If you would like to speak on zero five dash one eight, please rise and head to the podium to my right, that's your last call.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of GA dash zero five dash one eight.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA zero five dash one eight. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. And now we will have a short presentation.
Jenna Blackway, Public Works Sanitation Supervisor. Today, we're gonna give you a short presentation on recycling and trying to reduce contamination, because it's a big issue all over the country. It varies from area to area, but we want to go over Florida and what our rules and regulations are for the city of Pontegora. We have a short video that was provided to us by Waste Management to help educate all of our residents and citizens, just to go over what is and is not allowed in your recycling container. First to introduce to you, I have Todd Perez, he's the District Manager.
Good morning, Todd Perez with Waste Management.
Good morning.
Morning, Todd.
And I have Stephanie Kissinger, she's the Public Sector Solutions Manager.
Good morning, good to see you all.
Good morning.
As I said, our main objective is to reduce contamination, that's just the whole point of this whole presentation, is to help everyone understand what can and cannot go into your recycling cart. We just want to make this as efficient as possible for the drivers and for the recycling process. This is just a short, a little video coming up here, just going over everything for you. We're getting sound, hold on one moment.
It's a dirty job. Thank you.
Oh, there's my.
In Florida, the recycling industry is working cooperatively with state and local governments to improve recyclables, to strive to reach the statewide goal of seventy-five percent recycling by 2020. Unfortunately, today, as much as thirty percent of the material placed in residential recycling containers is non-recyclable garbage. Non-recyclable garbage contaminates recyclables, slows down the recycling process, increases the cost of recycling, and decreases the value of the end product, and that's bad news for everyone, including workers who many times each day must climb into the processing machinery and cut away plastic bags, dry cleaning film, cords, and other non-recyclable contamination. Wow. And with China, the world's largest market for recycled materials, stateable refuse to accept any new material with more than point three percent contamination. The long-term environmental and economic viability of recycling in Florida is threatened by its high contamination rates. That's why it's vital to place the right items in the recycling bin before it gets to the curb. Remember, recycling is a manufacturing process. The goal for the inbound material should be no contamination, with a margin of error of no more than fifteen percent. In order to produce a product available recyclables that has a viable end market, counties and cities with industry support need to take the lead in educating their residents in recycling right. Recycle all aluminum and steel cans, plastic bottles and jugs, and paper and cardboard, and no plastic bags, cords and hoses, or food and liquids in your curbside container. When in doubt, throw it out. Together, Floridians can rethink, reset, and recycle to ensure the viability of recycling in Florida.
So here's just a short list of what is acceptable for the city of Pontegora with our recycling contract. Newspapers, magazines, office paper, but no shredded paper, brown paper bags, paperboard cartons, dairy and juice containers, junk mail, foam books, flattened cardboard, plastic bottles, plastic containers, which are numbered one through seven, glass bottles and jars, aluminum cans, and tin or steel cans. Again, please, no plastic bags, as you can see, it really contaminates the whole process and slows them down with their efficiency. No liquids, no food, waste, fabric, wood, hoses, cords, or styrofoam. And just a couple memorable phrases to hopefully, you know, keep all of us in line, when in doubt, throw it out, rethink, reset, and recycle.
So I do have a couple of questions, like the steel or the aluminum, like shaving cream or whipped cream, something that has one of those devices on the top, do we, no, that's trash.
That's trash.
That's what I've been doing, but I.
And this presentation is not to suggest that the city of Pontegora has a contamination problem.
Right.
It's more of a wish cycling issue, you know, people want to recycle so much, and they want to do the right thing, that's why the when in doubt, throw it out comes in. I mean, a razor blade is not recyclable, it's made of plastic and metal and gel, and it's it's trash, you know, so it's it's just certain things like that, you know, the styrofoam egg cartons, the lamps, patio furniture, garden hoses, your Christmas lights are not recyclable, all of those get tangled up in our in our machines, and it's it is just mainly in the city of Pontegora a matter of of wish cycling, so.
Yes.
Can you please explain what your policy is in terms of batteries, all different kinds of batteries? I had a, an inquiry, which Jenna helped me with this week, from a citizen that lives here, and I thought initially it was, she was talking about car batteries and motorhome batteries and that kind of stuff, it turns out she was actually asking about double-A and triple-A type batteries. Do you guys take those as well?
Well, double-A and triple-A type batteries can still go in the garbage.
That's correct.
Yes, it's, when you get into lithium batteries, car batteries, any kind of high-tech phone batteries, other electronic batteries, those are considered a flammable hazard. When they get compacted in the trucks, they can catch fire, they can be ignited by other hazardous material that people throw away, and, you know, every week you'll see a story across the country about some materials recovery facility that's caught fire, and it's usually due to things like those types of batteries mixed with chemicals and other hazardous waste, so, yeah, but I believe in the city of Pontegora, there are various places, including the Public Safety Building, where you can take batteries and your sharps and your medications on disposal, although you cannot.
No. They're not taking batteries.
Okay.
That was, that was the evolution of our conversation this week.
Oh, okay. I know at one point Lowe's and Home Depot had battery recovery programs, but I'm not sure if they still do.
I reached out to a couple of different vendors yesterday, Home Depot, they'll only take recyclable, they rechargeable batteries, so there's not really a good market, I called all different, you know, auto supply stores and everything else, and there's, they actually get charged to recycle the double-A, triple-A batteries, so they'll charge people about a dollar a pound if you want to bring your batteries there to recycle them, so, it varies from location to location.
But what about the Mid County Transfer Station?
They take that all, there's no charge, as long as you're a Charlotte County resident, there's no charge there at all.
Important for us, because I I know I've had to educate quite a few residents about that that's available.
Correct, yes, it's helpful to a lot of people, a lot of paint and other things that we can't take, and they're regular garbage, so, we get a lot of phone calls for stuff like that.
The other thing is the caps, in your video, you showed the caps going in with like the milk carton, and what about the dairy, like the paper, like a milk, a milk carton and a milk jug, those caps are okay to go in?
Yes, those caps are okay to go in. The the technology of the optical sorters and our MERS has evolved to the point where if you compress those items, like if you have a liter Coke bottle and you compress it flat, the optical sorters read it as a two-dimensional item and will try to treat it like paper. So we ask that you keep them in their original form with the caps on, as opposed to compressing them.
Okay.
Caps on?
Caps on.
Caps on.
That's what the video showed, which I was.
Oh, I always stomp on my.
It'll read it as a two-dimensional object, and it'll toss it and treat it like it's it's paper.
Oh. Gary?
I just have a comment, because it doesn't really affect you guys directly, but it does affect our community. It is inconvenient to dispose of out-of-date safety flares for the boating community, okay? We can't dispose dispose of it the way we would if it was gun ammunition or so forth, it has to go to the Mid County Recycling Center, and it is a safety hazard theoretically, because it could be, so I just wanted to make that a comment, it's, you can't put it in your bin, and you can't take it to the.
No, safety flares are not recyclable. Neither are bowling balls or hand grenades, please keep those out of your recycling cart, and, yeah, when in doubt, just take everything to, any kind of hazardous material to your Mid County Transfer Station. Yes, ma'am?
I'm on our city's website and looking at the information provided by Waste Management on recycling, and we do cover aerosol cans, as the do not include, but in the, what your can include, it says plastic bottles and containers caps removed. So the information, theirs says caps removed, and you've just said caps on, so.
Yep.
We need to update our information so that we have.
Yeah, we do need to update it, that was a recent verbal indicator to me that caps stay on.
Okay.
We often have to ask, so, because the technology of the MERS evolved, and, you know, before, I'd always just take my cap off, throw it in the trash, and put my my bottle in the in the recycling bin, and so now it's hard for me to even leave the cap on and throw it in there, but.
Okay, thank you.
And if you leave the cap off, and it goes into the recycling bin, it's, as you see from the video on those machines, it's just gonna fall out and filter down to the ground of the facility, and it'll be swept up like garbage.
Oh, okay.
So.
So all those little plastic strips that you pull off is something, those go in the trash, then?
Those go in the trash, your receipts go in the trash. I do have for you, there was a great industry article that came out a couple of weeks ago that explains, you know, recycling habits to, in layman's terms, and it's very easy to read, it's not a negative article in any way, and it's just the most common wish cycling mistakes that people make. I figured it would be handy for you all to have to answer any kind of citizen questions, so if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to bring it up for you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more comment.
Yep.
In our particular community, and this is no offense to Waste Management, but it's most desirable to to separately recycle your aluminum cans at the Peace River Wildlife Center.
Yes.
Couldn't resist that.
Well, and while we're on the subject of contamination, one other form of.
Well, and while we're on the subject of contamination, one other form of contamination that we often don't consider or think about is water. And it's very important that we keep our recycling materials not only clean but dry. And typically, in the City of Ponte Gorda, overall, the residents do very well recycling, and overall, the contamination level is acceptable and very, very low. But when we're in our practices at our homes with recycling, it's important to keep in mind the paper, the newspaper, the, you know, the mail, the white paper, the cardboard, all those items stay dry, because moisture is also a contaminant, and we need to try to keep the moisture down in those products as best as possible as well.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any quasi-judicial public hearings or second readings.